Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for October 2, 2018. Could we please call the roll?
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you so much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Just one minor addition, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to add 10A1, which is a preliminary budget clarification based upon some erroneous comments that were recently made on social media.
Councilor Whiting?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Mokel. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number four, consent agenda, just a couple items tonight. Any changes, additions, Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, 4A4 needs to be removed. Unfortunately, the river is not going to allow the event to take place, so...
4A4?
4A4 needs to come off.
4A4 is removed. Councilor Lehman?
I move the consent agenda as amended, removing 4A4.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Luce. Before we vote, we will read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for October 2 of 2018. 4A1 approves the minutes of the September 18, 2018, meeting. 4A2 approves Board's and Commission's interview committee's recommendation of Sean Corrigan to fill the remaining term on the vacant Police Civil Service Commission. And 4A3 approves the temporary liquor license for St. Joakim and Anne's Adult-Only Night on October 5 of 2018.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There is no further discussion. Councilor Luce?
I didn't quite hear what Mr. Reynolds said about 4A3, or 4A4, excuse me, and why it couldn't be. I didn't have my...
The river flooding is not allowing the event to take place.
Okay.
We've read the consent agenda into the public record. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number five. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we will move forward then. Business removed consent, there was none. And item number seven, I would entertain a motion to recess for our EDA meeting. Councilor Lewis?
Make a motion to recess for EDA meeting.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Mokel. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We stand in recess, Mr. President.
Call the Shakopee Economic Development Authority for October 2, 2018, to order. Please, Secretary, note the role. Everybody should have an agenda and packet of information. A motion to approve the agenda would be in order. Ms. Mokel?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Your second. Mr. Luce? Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Consent to business. EDA minutes. Motion for consent. Ms. Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business.
Second. Mr. Luce? Questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number four, discussion and direction on a grant opportunity. Item 4A. Mr. Kerski?
Good evening, Mr. President, board members. Tonight, we briefly talked about this at another meeting. Since then, we've held some meetings with some of our partners, so this is a discussion about innovation in university space for Shakopee and a feasibility study. So we've met with the First Stop Shop, CDA, Scott County, and Scott County, along with SCORE, Open to Business, and our latest partner is Minnesota State University in Mankato. We did go to Mankato, met with their management staff, and they're very excited about an opportunity here in Shakopee. They have a lot of alum that are in this area, and they see this as a great opportunity to offer university courses, support services, and other things here in town. They think they'll be able to draw not only from Shakopee but all the surrounding towns. They have a lot of current students that are from Eden Prairie, Chan, Chaska, Shakopee, Prior Lake, that this would be a great opportunity for them and reduce some of the commuting distances, particularly in the wintertime. So I show you this because this is Thomas Edison's light bulb, and if you all remember, as I do, the second light bulb on there was the light bulb for just about forever until a few years ago, and then we got the fluorescent light bulb, and now we have the LED. And the reason why I show this is that innovation has been collapsing in timeframes, so it took probably 100 years to go from the light bulb to the fluorescent, and now in about three or four years, we have LEDs which are pretty commonplace, and the price has been dropping, and that's because really of innovation. And that's something the university is really interested in, as are our partners, and that there's a lot of things going on, but not a lot in Scott County, and that there's some real opportunity from a business standpoint to really make some of that happen here. This is just an idea of how business incubators, which we're talking about kind of something beyond that, but it allows an inexpensive workplace, basically with shared operational costs, the ability to network and collaborate, which is really what makes these things work. And you'll notice from the slides I show you, kind of the new office for these is pretty open with some ability to go into other conference rooms and have meetings, but people really are working together to try and solve problems. And so this is kind of typical, one of the things we talked to the university about. So this would be a feasibility study that will look at a bunch of different options, things like classrooms here, but also their support and other organizational support of some kind of innovation entrepreneurial kind of coworking space, but also a landing space for new companies or companies looking at the area before they make a final commitment. And these are pretty popular around the country. There's a couple of ones that have been hugely successful. But you can see here, they do have kind of the, as you grow or improve your space, you can either use a conference room or you can get a private office so that eventually roll out of here into other office space or to manufacturing space. This is actually the space at Mankato. It's in their basement. They have a second floor space that the university also supports, but this has everything from stand-up kind of desk space to kind of a lounger to places you can meet with clients to what they call phone booths, which you saw in some of the other slides, where you can go have a private conversation on the phone with somebody or a private meeting. And then corporations are looking at these more and more as places where they're kind of letting innovation leave the corporate campus and go outside of campus. If you remember back in the day, Bell Labs was really the place where a lot of things were invented for AT&amp;T. That went kind of the wayside. What's kind of coming back, this is AT&amp;T's Foundry Project, which is in an innovation lab where they actually support this, where people come with ideas. Then Target runs one in the Twin Cities right now, kind of on the retail side. Black &amp; Decker has one with Stanley Tools, their co-company in Connecticut, where they're looking at what's the future of tools. So this is becoming more and more common where off-campus, largely in cooperation with universities, they fund small startup companies or people that have ideas. If they're successful, they buy them or fund them and roll them out, and it's just a way to really accelerate their ability to go into the marketplace. And it's not typically on their corporate campus. It's part of a much smaller campus. And so there are companies in Shakopee that potentially could take advantage of that. This is the other thing, is how do you market the changing face of manufacturing where it's much more collaborative, functional, and how do you make it fun? And so there's a number of these that have occurred across the country where they actually bring in new machinery, companies train on them, and they introduce them to the workforce, and they can kind of say, "Look, work on it here for a week or two before you go into the company because we want you to hit the ground running." And this is a university facility where companies actually bring in their latest and greatest machinery. They use this as their sales floor, so they actually sell this machinery off the floor and bring in the latest model, but it allows students and other companies to train on their latest equipment. It's become pretty popular in the country because these are not easy to haul around and show to a company, so it allows them to say, "Look, go to XYZ. You can see how the machinery's being used. If you want to buy one, you can test your equipment there, and then if you want it, we can take it off that floor and send it to your factory." So it's a pretty innovative way to allow the potential, people using the machines to use it in advance, but also get equipment at either no cost or deeply discounted cost. And you'll see this, this is another facility where they're allowing people to use the machinery on some of their own ideas, but also training, so it's becoming more and more common in the country. And this is latest and greatest is 3D prototyping. So in the old days, you'd have to CNC this or machine it. The 3D printing is rapidly changing to the point of where we have, there's a company in the Twin Cities right now that's making prototype parts for the automotive and aircraft industry. This is an idea, if you are working on a part, you can put it in CAD and basically print the part out. So this technology is probably in three or four years has moved light-years from where it was. So the machines have gotten much bigger, they're much faster, and they actually can now make parts on demand that can be used in full production, either vehicles or airplanes. So this would be the idea of the university campus part. They would have probably some more intimate classrooms, and this would serve multiple levels. So right now, kids that are seniors that want to take college level courses, they're doing it in some schools. It's been sort of successful because they have high school teachers that are certified by the university. They've been more successful. They actually have university staff. Off-campus, the kids go here, for instance, say, one day in the afternoon to take a class. So this is actually a senior high school class. The university is doing that in a number of communities. They also see it as a great opportunity to roll classes out, so if you're not quite there on a degree, that you could finish up your degree here at night, and companies can pay for it. Or if you want to get an advanced degree, they would have the opportunity to come here. And I think the feasibility study would look at what the market is for those advanced degrees, what they would be. And college teachings changed a lot. They do a lot over the internet now, but there's a lot more hands-on and group. This is another kind of model classroom where you can see, one of the students is actually writing on the wall. These are walls that can be cleaned off. They have these big monitors where everyone's basically Wi-Fi-ing into those monitors and discussing projects. So this is another way that both companies and students can use the space kind of more interactively to try and solve problems. So the next steps would be, we would complete an RFP reviewed by our partners and approved by the USDA for a feasibility, the USEDA for a feasibility study, issue the RFP. We'd also be applying for funding to the CDA. They have said they would accept a grant for up to $30,000 as a match towards the EDA funding. Once we get responses, we would then apply to the EDA for funding for the feasibility study. They would do a 50-50 match, and we would bring that contract for consultant back to the EDA for approval.
Questions of staff? Mr. Lewis?
How much do they think the funding is going to be needed? How much of it, what's it going to cost?
So, Mr. President, board members, typically studies can cost up to $100,000 depending on what the scope is. Talking to our partners, this would be a pretty broad scope. For instance, Mankato, the university there actually has a partnership with Dakota Technical and also Hennepin, so there are some things they want to take a look at, what could be offered here in Shakopee so that you wouldn't have to go to their campuses. So they would look at kind of the market feasibility. They would look at what the corporate appetite would be to offshore, some stuff to this facility for discussion and kind of innovation. And then they already have a preliminary concept of the potential for some coworking space, but they also want to look at, from Open to Business, who's one of the partners. They do a lot of business here for writing business plans and funding, what kind of the companies there are out there, and what kind of support services they really need. The idea would try to make this kind of a one-stop shop, so Open to Business potentially would have an office here some many days a week. The First Stop Shop would have people here. SCORE would have people here, and the university would have staff here. They have a SBDC in Mankato. Our closest one is on the other side of Minneapolis. They would negotiate to move an SBDC person here also because that's another kind of business support person. So up to $100,000 is what they see, can be less, really depends what the scope is.
Mr. Whiting?
I know we're still looking at the RFP portion of this, but potentially, who would be running this facility? Where would this facility be? Would it be owners of it, or how would that work?
Mr. President, board, we're in discussions with the university and partners. I think it would be somewhere in downtown. They did look at the old gas station site. The university likes that because it's kind of a high-profile location, can be seen pretty easily. We own a parking lot that's pretty underutilized behind it. And then, I'm sorry, what was your next question? Who would run it? So I think we looked at the feasibility study to see. I've done a couple of these, and in some instances, the universities have run them. Some instances, the cities actually hired on it and run them. Some, it's been a third-party independent operator. Really depends on the community and what the ultimate kind of mix of uses look like.
Ms. Mokel?
What is our risk? So we do the RFP, we put it out there. What are the risks that we wouldn't get this approved?
Mr. President, board members, there's really, so let's say it's 100,000. Our risk might be that 20,000, and we're going to look at other partners to fund that. So there really is no risk. It could come back and say, "Look, your community, region can't support anything here." The best case, it comes back and says, "Five of the 10 things we think are really good, and you should look at moving them forward," and then we would work with the EDA. The reason why they require the feasibility study is, in the past, the USDA, EDA would just fund these projects, the actual construction, and then sometimes they would fail, and they'd go, "Now what do we do with it?" Because they basically own 50% of the building, so they've switched to a process now where they fund a feasibility study that they review in advance, the RFP. They get to look at the feasibility study, and so they potentially down the road could be a 50% funder of the actual building.
Mr. Lewis?
You just answered my question. Mr. President, so the first step would be to put out a request for proposal for a feasibility study, apply to the Scott County CDA for a grant of 30,000, and then apply for a matching grant from the USEDA?
Mr. President, board members, correct. So we would try and lock down the $30,000, so we have that up to $30,000 kind of in our pocket. We'd get the RFP done. If it comes back, and let's say it's 75,000, we know we have 30,000 in hand from the CDA. We'd then go back to the EDA and say, "Will you do the 50% match?" And if they say yes, we'd have to make up the difference.
And then if that were to happen in those two financial pieces, then we do the feasibility study. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Kerski, can you clarify, go back to EDA? Is that the Shakopee EDA or USEDA?
So the RFP would be in partnership with the first slide I had and in partnership with the USDA for the RFP because we want to make sure, they have a lot of federal requirements that have to go in the RFP. And we want to make sure that once we get a response, they don't go, "Well, we're not going to fund it because you didn't meet our requirements."
Okay.
Jen's had a pretty long discussion with them. I've done, I think, three or four of these. She's done one. They don't have a long discussion with you unless they're really serious about potentially funding that 50%.
Mr. Lewis?
From first glance, it looks like a good thing for the city. I mean, I think everybody here knows someone who's commuted to Mankato, and in the wintertime, that's terrible. So I think this would be a great, great deal for Shakopee and our whole surrounding area if this would come to fruition. And, you know, as far as how this works, I mean, you know, they eliminate a lot of failures in places like this. They, you know, they brainstorm, bounce it off each other, you know, they can eliminate a lot of bad possibilities quickly and then come up with some very good ones. So I'm in favor of it, so.
Let me make sure I understand this completely. So the first step that we're taking or being asked to take tonight is a feasibility study, which could cost up to $100,000, paid for by multiple sources, USEDA, Scott County CDA, and there was one other participant in there somewhere. Depending on the findings of this study, the study would show what our needs are, where we don't have a, or where we have a lack of need. And then our proposal for any kind of a structure would be based on that study. And then the portion, the cost and funding for the structure itself would be divided up amongst different stakeholders?
Mr. President, board members, we don't know yet. I mean, the feasibility study is going to come back, and whatever is feasible, then they're going to look at the economics and say, "Well, we know the USDA typically funds 50% of the building, but here are other resources, or not, that could fund the other portion."
Okay, but there's a potential for the USEDA to fund a portion of the building?
Typically, after a successful feasibility study, that's everyone's science-off on, they typically fund up to 50% of the building.
And then hypothetically, of course, if Hampton Tech or Dakota College saw a real regional need to have a satellite location there, they may participate in a portion of that?
Mr. President and members, I doubt they would fund. They would probably be a tenant. They have some pretty severe state. If you remember, Dakota had a facility in Burnsville that closed. That was a rental facility.
Okay.
And what they learned from that is, probably should have been a place they had it downtown because there was no place for the students to go afterwards, which was the number-one complaint. And it was kind of in a shopping mall, which people didn't like going to a shopping mall. So one of the things I think we're going to, part of the feasibility study, we test to see if people would go, "Where should it be? I mean, here's one site, but where's the other potential sites for it?" And then what's the heaviest use? Could it be used 24 hours a day, 12 hours a day? I mean, what's that look like? Because that, from a financial modeling standpoint, is going to see what the revenue looks like.
I'm trying to get a picture of if the feasibility study is good, and we're going to build a building, who's going to fund paying for building the building?
Again, that'll be part of the feasibility study. We know the USEDA would fund 50%. We'd have to look at what other sources are available locally and regionally to fund the other 50%. And I think beyond, you can always get a building funded. It's a question of, once you get it up and running, who pays to run it?
Right.
That's my, been my experience in all these projects is, it's real great to get a building, and then you go, "Well, who's going to run it now?" I think that's the bigger picture, and I think the feasibility study needs to look at who are the best candidates to run it, and how do you make it work from an economic standpoint?
Well, I suspect that over years, you get different people that come in and have different offerings, like maybe it's the 3D printing, which is fairly new. They're going to be in. After that becomes a market staple, something new will be on the market, and then they'll be in there teaching their stuff or whatever, so. Okay. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Reynolds?
I'll just say, Mr. President and members, that I've had conversations with county senior staff. They're very interested in this. This actually fits in with the Live, Learn, Earn Initiative that Scales has been working on for the last two and a half years. So, you know, they definitely want to be a partner as well.
Any other questions of staff? Lewis?
Would it be possible that our partnership would be limited to the property, being that we own it, for that site, if it was chosen?
Mr. President, board members, when the EDA looks at the match, they look at real estate as one of the matches. So that's potentially, whatever the value is and whatever we have into it, they'll look at as part of a match. It's not always cash.
I guess from my perspective, there's so many unknowns until you actually do some kind of a feasibility study. You really don't know a whole lot of detail at this point.
Mr. President, the good news is, we went and met with Mankato, and we kind of went, well, they were kind of, I won't say lukewarm, but really didn't give us any feedback. By the time we were back here, they'd already met with the president and gave it a thumbs up, so they're very interested in doing something creative in the community.
Mr. Whiting?
You know, our community has quite a few companies that have a lot of innovative edges, and they're always looking for that trained workforce component, potentially. We don't know, but they might offer some classes to help be feeders for their type of work. You know, Scott County, Shakopee lacks that higher level of education, and I think that this at a small scale, it's not a huge university, but at least gives us an opportunity to fill that need. So I would be supportive of the RFP.
Mr. Lewis?
Do we need a motion on this, or do we just need agreement from the group?
You would need a motion to approve RFP. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion approving, issuing of a request for proposal along with request for the funding to the USEDA and Scott County CDA.
Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Luce?
Second.
And the funding from the USEDA and Scott County CDA in the motion is for portions of the RFP, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number five, EDA reports, EDA bill list. Questions on the EDA bill list? Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to adjourn to October 16, 2018, at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Ms. Mokel? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.
Re-convene the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for October 2, 2018. We are up to 9A1, rezoning of six properties from River Bluff Development. to 9A1 rezoning of six properties from River Bluff Development. Mr. Kerski.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a rezoning for the River Bluff Development. These are the sites. If I can get this to work here. So basically, it's from Doggy Doo's, their parking lot, the little house that we own, the larger parcel the EDA owns in the back that's vacant, half of this alley, and then the house the EDA purchased, and then the right-of-way that the city has off of Levy Drive. So the rezone six parcels from B1 Highway Business to B3 Central Business District for development of 125 market-rate apartments and a restaurant. Site is guided for mixed-use development by the 2030 comp plan. Y'all remember what the proposed, proposal looked like. So the adjacent property over here is already zone B3. We would leave out the three non-EDA-owned property, because we do have, we're contiguous here. And whatever happens at a later date, we would consider getting that rezoned. It's already guided mixed-use, but we will leave that as B1. So the original zoning ordinance scenario, B3 regulations are more suited for street grid layout, lot size and configuration, significant changes in the community goals. Site was identified as an appropriate site for multifamily development. Current zoning limits the ability to develop the site because of setbacks. Significant changes in development patterns recur. This is an on-met demand for housing units in the downtown and the riverfront. And the comprehensive plan requires another provision. The site's already guided for mixed-use, which is what has been proposed. So the plan of commission recommended city council approval at their September 6 meeting, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Does this, I have one in particular, or Counsel Lewis?
Slightly unrelated, but I know there were some talks with the one property owner that's being omitted here across the alley. Where are we on that, or?
We've had some discussions of that property owner, and I think we'll get this underway and then see what the rest of these property owners want to do.
Mr. Kerski, is there, you know, moving the zoning for this new use to the B3 Central Business, is there any consideration for mixed-use?
So, mayor and council, we don't really have a mixed-use zoning. B3 is where the comp plan really says it should happen. So it's guided for mixed-use, so B3 would be the obvious choice to rezone it to.
Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, question for staff. Looking at your picture on the overhead here, where part of this property is on top of our road?
So, mayor and council, if you remember, from their plan, the property's on top of the road, but when this gets developed, they'll be replating that, or through easement, providing a new road access for us. So they're not actually going to be building on all the land we're rezoning, but that's the way the parcels are today.
The corner gets squared off, but then the alignment that we see to the east in front of 200 Levy Drive will line up with the rest of this property?
Mayor and council members, so if you, the road will come down through here and then line up like this.
Okay.
At a right angle. So this curve will be eliminated from the road. And we're rezoning the alley because it's part of their plan. They're going to leave this alley in place, but they're going to have a request for abandon that alley. They're working with the utilities right now on utility relocations out of that alley.
And we would vacate?
We would vacate that alley, mayor, yes.
Got it. Counsel Lehman?
Are there accesses off the eastern part of that block for alleys to the residential units?
Mayor and council, so the entrance, proposed entrance to the garage is here?
Eastern side, these?
To the alley.
Oh, to the alley. There's no entrance to the building. They have parking, what I call teaser service parking on the backside of the building, and then...
Point of clarification, Counsel Lehman?
I'm talking about where your pointer was, to the, from the alley to them existing lots, them three lots to the south.
So, excuse me, mayor and council, this property access is currently off of 69.
Okay.
This property access is right here. You can see the driveway, and this property access is here. So we're just keeping that alley so that we have fire access and other access to the rear of these properties. And also, even though all of this area is getting undergrounding, Spuck's requested that we leave, there's a pole right here that runs wires to these properties. We'll leave that pole, so that it'll come up out of the underground to that pole to service those houses.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? Questions of staff? If not, thank you. Counsel Whiting?
I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance number 02018-016, an ordinance approving the rezoning of six properties from B1 Highway Business to B3 Central Business District for the River Bluff Development.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Mokel for their discussion, discussion, discussion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Well, we've got to move along here. If we're going to make our 11 o'clock adjournment time, moving ahead to 9B1 forfeiture process review. Chief Tate, welcome.
Thank you, mayor, and members of council. Staff was asked to present a review of our forfeiture process. You see, every so often, you'll see surplus property memo come through with a number of vehicles on there, and it's a good, good timing. Since last legislative session, there was a bill introduced that would have severely limited the circumstances which forfeitures would have been allowed, essentially eliminating them. Had that bill passed, our drug task forces would have been in serious trouble throughout the state. And I think the only happy people would have been the drug dealers themselves. We know why they do this. They do this to make money. And having that ability to impact their business that way does keep our community safer. There's a lot of misconceptions out there about forfeitures, a lot of misconceptions. There's a lot of national articles appear in national newspapers, programs on TV, where they will talk about something that happened in a county or a police department, usually down south. And the comment you keep hearing over and over and over again is, well, you should have to be convicted before the government seizes your property. We agree, and so does Minnesota state statute. So I caution everybody before you read an article and say, well, that must be how things are done in Minnesota. No, they're not. We actually have a pretty comprehensive state statutes governing when, where, how, and how the funds can be used. So we'll get into that a little bit tonight. I hear several horror stories. Someone just got their, I was asked this by a legislator, that, you know, I had somebody who was a .08 on their second DUI. She, her vehicle was forfeited. She lost her job, couldn't pay the rent, and was essentially out. Time out, that's not, under state law, statute, that's not an incident where you can, you can forfeit a vehicle. A lot of innocent owner defense stories that you hear, and thankfully, we have, have some experts that are going to be here and present for you tonight that can go over some of those scenarios, because I think oftentimes, they get, they get exaggerated, or you're not hearing all the facts with that. I actually hate to say this, because it makes my stomach turn, but it is a prob, a popular phrase you hear out there, policing for profit. That just implies corruption, and, and I, it does. It makes my stomach turn. We run a very ethical process here, which you'll, you'll see. And in most cases, I mean, you see the vehicles that come through. They're not Mercedes. I mean, these are, these are vehicles that oftentimes, when you look at, they're either salvaged, junked, and you look at the staff time that goes into them, we're not doing this for money. We're doing this to keep the community safe. All right? The repeat DUI offenders, the drug dealers that are pushing in our community are as much a danger to this community as anybody out there, and these are important means that we can combat them with. And I also hear, well, they're not a deterrent. They don't, they don't reduce crime. I'll get into that maybe a little bit later at, at the end. I disagree with that. I'm very passionate about our forfeiture program, passionate about them in general. And as you'll see, there's a lot that goes into them. So with that, we've got a couple presenters here tonight. Lisa Skoug is with the Scott County Attorney's Office. Lisa is a, an extremely respected and accomplished attorney who's argued in front of the State Supreme Court. She's been prosecuting cases for Shakopee for over 20 years. She's a fierce litigator and someone that has done an awful, awful lot of hard work to keep our, our community and our county safe. And she handles all forfeitures, not just for Shakopee, but for all of Scott County. So she's going to come up. And then I've got Captain Chris Delwell here. Captain Delwell, who you all know, he handles all of our forfeitures for our police department. So everything in terms of service, certified letters, all those things, Chris does an extraordinary amount of work, and he does it very well in terms of our forfeitures. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Skoug.
Thanks, chief.
Hi, council. I'm Lisa Skoug. As Jeff mentioned, I've been prosecuting for Shakopee for over 24 years, the city of Shakopee. And I've also done your forfeitures for over 24 years. Ron Hosevar, my boss, who's the county attorney, is also here to answer any questions that you have, because he oversees what I do, to make sure that I'm doing everything correctly. As the chief mentioned, we prosecute and do forfeitures for over nine different cities in Scott County, plus the outlying county area. We have a program that's pretty solid. In fact, I lecture across the state to other jurisdictions, other county attorney's offices, for the Minnesota County Attorneys Association and for the post board. So I've been intricately involved in a lot of the legislation and so forth that have gone through the state here for the last several years. Just going to kind of give you a little overview for those of you that don't know forfeitures. There's three types of forfeitures in Minnesota. The three types are alcohol-related, drug-related, and designated offenses. The majority of the cases that Captain Delwell will talk to you about are what we see here in Shakopee, which are a lot of DWIs and a lot of drug cases. Our main goal and our main mantra has always been to make sure we're making the public safe. We'll take any type of car, as Captain Delwell will tell you. I don't care if it's a car worth $200, or if it's a car that's worth $10,000. We take everything. We do not delineate between the bad cars and the good cars. Our job is to get the offender off the road and to get the instrumentality away from the offender to keep our streets and our public safe. That is our goal. The main thing that you should probably take away from this, and a lot of the issues that are coming about, is that we're just taking everything and anything. We're bound by the statute, and the statute's quite specific on what we can take and the person, and the procedure that we do take it. The main DWIs, or the main forfeitures that we do are for DWIs. And as you can see in the first box, we have to meet prerequisites before we can take a vehicle. We don't take a vehicle on a first offense. We take it on when there's two or more prior alcohol-related offenses. There's an aggravating offense, meaning there's children in the car, or they're twice the legal limit. They have a B card, meaning they signed a contract with the state that they will never use alcohol the rest of their life in return for a driver's license. Or they're cancelips, meaning they're canceled and immeasurable to public safety. So you've got to kind of ring the bell before we can go ahead and take your car and hold it for forfeiture. Forfeiture's not automatic. We need a conviction. These are what are called designated offenses. So if I, if our office does not convict the offender, then we have to give the car back. The only time we can take it is if it meets one of these four prerequisites that are up on the top up here, and those that were laid out for you. So let's say we take a car, and we're waiting for to, for the criminal case to be done. If there's a lien holder on it, we're required to give all lien holders notice immediately that we're holding a car that they've got a lien interest on. And if there's a co-owner, we notify them immediately. And that your police department are unbelievably quick. Within 24 hours, those notices are out the door. So we serve the offender at the time of the seizure, and then any other parties that are interested in it, including lien holders, are given an immediate notice, certified mail return receipt requested the next day. And we make sure they're served in a timely manner. Once it's made through the criminal system, then if they've pled to the prerequisite for forfeiture, then the car is forfeited. They do have the right to have it in front of a judge and have a judge hear the matter, and that's called a demand for judicial determination. So not all of this is automatic. There's a judicial process here. So they can always get in front of a judge and say, you know what, I, I need my car for work. I know I've had 12 DWIs, but I need my car for work. The problem is, is they're not going to have a driver's license. Ignition interlock, they're still doing research on. That was kind of the hubbub with the, I think with the legislature this last year, they were looking at different ways of getting cars back and protecting public. But the ignition interlock is something that's put into a car. They have to blow into it before they can take off, whether that's going to take the place of forfeitures. They're still kind of grappling with all of those issues. But the judge will come back and say they have to follow the statute, and it says you must forfeit the car if they've met the prerequisites. So let's say we've got this $10,000 car, and it's got a $3,000 lien. We take subject to the lien. That means we've got to contact the lien holder. They have the option of having our jurisdiction sell it, or they can come sell it, and then after all the expenses are out, they'll disperse the monies. So nobody is getting screwed here, folks. I mean, there's statutes that are in place here to make sure that the innocent owner is heard, that there's a lien interest that's being heard, and then also to make sure that the defendant is convicted. What's interesting is, we're getting just as many cars now for controlled substances. Minnesota has a law that you shall not transport any illegal substances in your car. And we all know the opiate crisis that's going on, and there's lots of drugs, cocaine, meth, there's all kinds of things. I do bail hearings for the county attorney's office, and on a daily basis, I'm getting anywhere between four and six new people in jail on a daily basis. And guess what, folks? They're out there driving. And they are jeopardizing those other persons on the road. So the legislature has made a statute 609531, and this is what this slide is about, that says that if you have $100 worth of drugs, and it's a felony, that your car can be seized for forfeiture. So that means that we're going to serve you a notice saying you cannot carry around 10 grams of meth or cocaine. We're going to hold your car for forfeiture. They go through the criminal process. If they're convicted, then that car is forfeited unless you file a demand that you want to get in front of a judge and plead your case. So again, if there's a lien holder on that car, or if there's a co-owner, all of those issues are flushed out in the judicial system. This is just not a one swipe, I'm taking your car and you're never getting it back. There's a process that's in place here in the state of Minnesota. We also take money, besides vehicles with drugs. This is just drug cases. We take money, guns, or precious stones and metal. We're getting a lot more people that are getting their permits to carry, and they're either under the influence, or they're carrying drugs on their person. And Minnesota has a statute that you cannot carry while you're in proximity to drugs, or that you're under the influence. And therefore, we're taking those guns away from those persons. Again, there's a judicial process in place. It's not automatic. Same thing with money. If you are, we've seen an awful lot, as Captain Delwell will tell you, there's a lot of people out there that are selling. When we see the scale in the car and the 20 baggies, you know, and the pound of pot in the backpack, and plus, they've got rolled up a couple thousand dollars. We're taking those monies away that give them the opportunity to go out and buy more and profit from their illegal activity. So those monies are also subject to forfeiture. So I wanted to make sure that you understand the forfeiture process here. The last slide that Chief Tate wanted me to show you was the breakdown here.
Excuse, excuse, question here, Counsel Lehman?
Yeah, I have a question on the last slide.
Last slide, okay.
About the controlled substance.
Yes.
The last circle.
Yes. Precious metals and stones?
Yeah, what, what exactly the, I mean, I'm envisioning somebody wearing a diamond wedding ring and having a wedding ring confiscated.
We, you know what, I can tell you that I've been doing this for 24 years, and I think there's only been one jurisdiction that took a Gucci watch from a guy that was homeless and had, had lots of drugs on him. And so we didn't know if it was stolen or taken, and they actually did the research. But it's not very often that we find, I don't know why the legislature has it in there. I can tell you, for Scott County, it's very rarely done.
I suppose if somebody's got...
No, but we're not going to take your wedding...
Gold or silver or something.
Yeah, we're not going to take your wedding ring. We don't believe that that, it has to be from proceeds of an illegal activity. So unless you're getting married while you're smoking a joint, I guess, you know, maybe, but...
Counsel Lewis?
Could you explain the lien holder rights, or, you know, someone that has an interest in a vehicle, what are their rights, you know, if, you know, like a bank has?
Sure, sure. And I can tell you that probably 60, 70% of the cars that come through are leamed. So we sent, Captain... So we send, Captain Delwell will talk to you about, he sends out a certified letter to GMC or Toyota or to Southwest Metro Bank or all of our banks, Klein Bank, all the banks around here that have an interest. Their interest is noted on the title. So if the car is ever forfeited and we apply to the state to transfer the title to the city of Shakopee, they won't let us do it unless we have made sure that we have proven that we have contacted the lien holder. Now, the lien holders typically will call us immediately and say, you know, I've got an interest in this car, they owe me $8,000. And we make a notation. We will not apply for a title until that is rectified or taken care of. A lot of times, they will come back and get the car and sell it themselves. They may have better markets. We happen to use, we have to sell a vehicle in a commercially reasonable manner. So we can't just call you up and say, would you like to buy a new 2008 Audi? We're required to sell it in a commercially reasonable manner, so we take it down to North Star Auto Auctions, which is to dealers. So it's not to the general public, but it's open to the dealers. And they will sell it. There's a cost for doing that and so forth. But the lien holders are always, we take subject to their lien.
Counselor Lewis?
So their lien is covered first by the sale. Anything over the lien amount goes to the county?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So they're always taken care of. Any other questions on that?
Other questions? If not, continue.
The last slide that is on here talks about once something is sold, once it's been judicially determined or administratively determined that we can forfeit this vehicle, the state will sell or the city will sell the vehicle. And on a DWI, 70% goes back to the city of Shakopee Police Department and 30% go to the county attorney's office. And everybody gets all excited that that's policing for profit. I can tell you right now how much work goes into each one of these forfeitures. And it's not that much money that has arrived from it. Our goal in this whole thing, as I indicated before, I don't care if the car is worth $10 or if it's worth $100,000, we take everything. We lose money on cars. We, and sometimes we do come out ahead, but we've got to pay for tow and storage and there's all different things that go into this. Yes.
How would you, how would you lose money or make money on a car? I mean.
You know, I'm going to let you talk.
All right. I'll wait for the third presenter.
You wait till you talk to your Captain Delwell and he'll tell you how they lose money. But again, our job is not to give it back to the offender, not to give it back to the offender's family, not to give it back to the, you know, the neighbor, something that they would have access to. Our goal is, is for all of you, including our children and other people, to be driving on the roads in Scott County, free from having drunks or people that are using drugs on the roadway. And this is a great deterrent. I can tell you that we have been consistent in Scott County. We're one of the leading counties in the state of Minnesota as far as doing our job and doing it right. The smaller counties up north don't have the opportunity or the resources to do what we do down here in the seven county metropolitan area. They may only have two or three people on their policing departments. They may have a city attorney that can't handle doing all the forfeitures. Down here, you've got a full staff. Mr. Hossevar makes sure that we are fully staffed in the forfeiture division and in the DWI enforcement and the drug enforcement areas. He's very, those are very passionate to him to do. As far as a drug forfeiture, the second part of this is, that split is a little bit more. That's a 70% back to the jurisdiction, 20% back to our office, and then 10% to the state. And I believe Captain Delwell will address all your issues on what your guys are doing. But I wanted to make sure everybody understood what forfeitures are. It's not an abusive discretion. We're pretty straightforward, we're pretty consistent on what we do. Mr. Hossevar is also here to answer any questions on what the county does.
Counselor Lewis?
On the drug confiscations, when there's large amounts of money, the same percentages go into effect?
It is, correct. So for the drugs, say for instance, I don't know if we've ever had anything over 50,000. We've had things in the twenties. Yes, it's still a 70, 20, 10 split. The only other times we have different splits is when we have prostitution cases because a lot of that money will go back to the state for education and deterrence from those types of activities. So you may not collect a lot of your forfeiture funds from forfeiting cars for prostitution. But for the most part, it's a 70, 30 or 70, 20, 10.
All right. I guess there's, in the, out there in the, some people view this as a taking. However, you began your presentation saying that in all these cases, in these three different categories, it's only after a conviction. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, there's, we have to have a conviction. I can tell you, sometimes DWI case, not very often, they may have an illegal stop or they may have somebody that finds some area that they can become, have a merit, you know, have a claim that the conviction won't happen and then we have to give the car back.
Yeah.
That's the way it goes. We want to protect their rights. I mean, as a prosecutor, I'm an officer of the court. I have to make sure that I'm protecting our rights as citizens to the Constitution, but yet I have to balance it with the rights of everybody else that's out on the roadway.
I understand. Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, there's a couple lines in here. It says, "Keep vehicle for official use and an effort should be made to have the vehicle available for DARE program." How do you come up with the price of the vehicle so the percentages can be handed out?
I'm going to let Captain Delwell talk to you, but I do believe Shakopee has kept a couple of cars that have been forfeited for police business. They may have used it with, for undercover. And then when they're done with it in a couple of years, they go back and sell it. Then we'll do the 70, 30 split. So my goal is, is that the police department can use it or any agency that's affiliated, you know, with that, with the police department, whether it's a drug task force. And as I indicated, Captain Delwell will talk to you, we've had a number of our jurisdictions that have used these cars. They paint them up and put their little lights on top and do their thing. And then when they're done using them in several years, they'll sell them. And then those monies will be dispersed, so.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Captain Delwell.
Not enough crowned vics forfeited.
Welcome. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Lisa did a fine job providing you with an overview of the statutory criteria and some of the procedures surrounding forfeitures. What I'd like to present is the extent to which we utilize those forfeiture laws. In order to do so, we prepared some information going back to 2016 to give you a bit more comprehensive yet current picture of what we're doing in terms of forfeitures. By and large, the largest portion of our forfeiture activity is vehicles. On average, we forfeit about 60 vehicles a year. Now, the caveat here is, I use the term forfeiture, but that 60, it also includes vehicles that would return to the owner. They mean they're technically not forfeited, but the owner in those cases was not the offender and therefore, we tried to get them back to them, people. So of those, we, the average number or the annual proceeds over the past three years are about $55,000. And the Shakopee Police Department receives 70% of that, which boils down to about 38.5. I think Chief Tate will probably touch a little bit more on what we do with our forfeiture So what becomes of all these vehicles, this roughly 60 a year? Well, like I mentioned, we return a fair amount of them to their registered owner. Over the years, that's averaged out to be about 22%. The ones that we do successfully forfeit and they don't have a lien and they're suitable for sale, we sell them at the auction. That represents about 38% of our cars. And then there are those that are just not suitable for resale. We strongly believe that, you know, that the spirit of the forfeiture laws is to take the instrument of the crime out of the hands of the offender. So we don't do any cherry picking. If it meets statutory criteria, then we seize it and pursue it according to the law. So if we don't return them to the owner and we don't sell them, we don't junk them, then there's that portion of vehicles that are, they have a lien on them. A lot of them have liens. And if the lien exceeds the value of the car, eventually, after they are quote unquote forfeited, we return them to the lien holder and that represents about 18%. That leaves about 2% and that pretty much is accounted for by, sometimes they're, the cars are involved in accidents. The insurance companies will sometimes give us the salvage value. If they don't and the car still has some value, we can sell it as salvage for parts. Now, what do we take them for? Overwhelmingly, the underlying offense that represents most of the vehicles are DWIs. And over the years, the past three in particular, 63% of the vehicles that we seize and subsequently forfeit are from DWI offenses.
Captain Delwell, could you slide your sheet up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Drug offenses then account for about 30% and the remaining seven is for what Lisa referred to as designated offenses. And that's your burglaries and fleings and criminal sexual conduct amongst a list of others, but those are some of the more popular ones.
I have a question. So I, the underlying offenses after conviction, then the forfeiture action starts. If I'm convicted of a drug offense or DWI, how on the top of your sheet there, how am I going to get that car back, returned to registered owner? If I'm convicted, how am I getting that car back?
You own. If you're the registered owner, unless we don't get a conviction or they do file for judicial determination and judge sees things differently, that a registered owner who is the offender will not get that car back.
Oh, you're saying that if I'm using someone else's car, I get convicted, they take that car for my DWI, but then they return it to the true owner who wasn't involved?
That's correct.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
Well, just to clarify, because maybe I misunderstood the early part of the presentation. If you got a DWI, it's your first one, forfeiture of your car is not even an option.
That is correct.
Correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. So the first offense, the driver is at fault. The second offense, the car is now partially at fault.
Involved, yeah.
Right?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The first offense is the driver's fault for driving drunk. The second offense, it's the driver and the car's fault.
Well.
No, no, no.
The spirit of the law.
Right. But the second offense, they'd have to be one prior over double illegal limit or have child endangerment or some other.
Even on your second DWI offense, you still have to have another, what they call an aggravating factor involved. That's a double over the limit, a child in the car, something like that.
Right.
Otherwise, if you're in '08, the first one, you're in '08, the second one, you've got to come back for the third time before your car can be lost.
And hopefully, you haven't killed anybody in the first couple of times. Okay?
No, he already answered it. Okay. Counselor Whiting?
Curious on the offenders. Does that first DWI ever have a sunset date or is that through a person's lifetime?
There's a 10-year look back.
10-year? Okay.
Counselor Mokel?
And what happens when the registered owner is of the same household?
Well, that's where it gets a bit tricky sometimes because we don't like to return a vehicle to the same house where access can be granted by the offender. And that's where the county attorney's office is involved. And there is an agreement that's reached between all parties that the vehicle will not be utilized by the offender in any way. And if they don't stipulate to that, well, they do. But, you know, we'd be reluctant to return it back to the residents.
Thank you.
Continue.
So that was vehicles. Our second most prevalent item seized is cash. And as you can see, in 2016, that's the amount that we seized and successfully forfeited, about $18,200. 2017, $22,500-ish, and to date in 2018, $18,600. What underneath there is the number of offenders that represent that dollar amount. So in 2016, that $18,200 represented 36 offenders to get to that amount and so on. The most prevalent offense are drug offenders. And the other category there, in 2016, we had the Ryder Cup in the area, so there was a prostitution operation that we conducted in cooperation with the state and some other agencies. So we did seize funds associated with solicitation of underage people during that time period. And likewise, in 2018, during the Super Bowl, we did one as well. And so that represents that seven number, seven offenders in 2018. Any questions on the cash portion?
Is, so for your cash amount in 2018, year-to-date, $18,000, but at the top of your sheet, you showed total dollars. Is that cash included in your total dollars?
No, Mayor. That was just the vehicle amount.
Other questions? Other questions? Fascinating, informative topic here.
I will just take a couple more minutes here. The other things that statute allows for us to seize are firearms and then there's the precious stones and jewelry and things like that. We don't take jewelry and precious stones and metals, very rare. But in terms of firearms, we do see some. As you can see, it's very few, one or two a year generally. And most often, that is for carrying while under the influence.
Thank you very, very much. Chief?
Mayor, members of council, I want to thank Captain Delwell and Lisa Scoog. They've forgotten more about forfeitures than I think most of us will ever learn and there's not much they haven't seen in what they've done. You know, one of the things that hasn't been touched on here is what do we do with the proceeds? That 70% or whatever that comes here. And some of them, you've seen in council memos, that, you know, we're purchasing X, Y, purchasing X, Y, and Z with forfeiture funds. We are governed by state statute on how we can spend that money and what we can spend it on, whether it's training, education, supplies, equipment, and so forth. Make no mistake about it, asset forfeitures have kept our budgets in check. They are a positive for the law-abiding taxpayers in our city. Look at our training budget. When was the last time there was a significant increase in the Shakopee Police Department training budget? We train more than anybody. I'll put our training records above anybody. We bring in national speakers to train our officers and a lot of that's done with forfeiture funds. And we've been able to keep that line item pretty consistent over the years. Counselor Lucy talked a little bit too about the cars and how, there was a question about how they get, you know, can they get used? We have used some vehicles. It's rare that we find a vehicle that's in good enough condition that'll last, that our mechanics think is good enough. And, you know, we don't want to be driving around in a Mercedes, having our detectives do that. But at the same time, some of these make for good bait cars, good investigator cars. There's times that, you know, for our vehicle rents, you know, we've got an investigator vehicle that's coming up and due, instead of purchasing a new one, we've been able to supplement with forfeiture vehicles. I think there was a year we pretty much went through every investigator vehicle. So again, a net impact, positive impact. We do a lot of really, really good things with our forfeiture proceeds. Most notably would be our recovery assistance program that all of you know about. We fund scholarships for those folks seeking treatment with one of our providers. And in fact, just last week, after two and a half years, we got our 29th applicant. So I'm real, real proud of that. One of those applicants, interesting, you know, there's a few of them. I mean, we've taken their cars. We've taken their cash in drug offenses. We've arrested them and they've gone through our RAP program. And there's one gentleman who And there's one gentleman who could not be here tonight. Um, but we, our drug task force took a significant amount of cash from this individual. And we paid for his treatment. And he's very, very vocal about the fact that, you know, I've been through the system. I went, they put me away for thirty days, sixty days, and it was always the money. It wasn't until they took my cash that I realized this is enough's enough. And we got him through and he's actually now a counselor for that drug, uh, prevention program. Just an absolute success story. We dare books for, for sacks, a lot of the stuff you see for night to night, a lot of equipment, whether it's Narcan in our squads, um, that our officers carry. All those types of things, everything, just about everything you see in the squads themselves. A lot of that's been purchased with forfeiture funds. Um, so, we use them judiciously, prudently. I know there's horror stories out there about some sheriff or chief that probably has a widescreen TV and a Keurig in his, in his office with that. Um, we can justify every single, uh, item that we've, we've spent our money on.
Couple of questions. Counselor Lehman?
Did any of the, uh, drug money used for the drug task force?
Counselor Lehman, yes. They have their, they're their own entity, so, you know, what they seize, um, helps fund their, their operations. But we've also used, uh, drug forfeiture funds to pay Shakopee's portion of the, um, their dues. Most communities do that. Again, that's something that we feel is important. But if we have the funds available and, and forfeitures, um, a lot of times, they're just one-time things. So, for example, our building's, what, fifteen years old? And our, um, our interview rooms, uh, the equipment is, is going bad. So, we need, it's going to cost about twenty-two thousand dollars for new microphones and new cameras and everything in there. Well, we interview drug dealers in those interview rooms. So, guess what we're going to use to pay for that, uh, that project?
Drug proceeds?
Yes, or, or portion of.
Yep.
Counselor Lewis?
I got a couple of questions. Um, this might have been better for Captain Delwell, but, uh, what percent of his time is spent on just forfeitures? Do you have an idea?
Too much. Um, it, it is. I, I tell you what, if you go, if you go by his office and you see the titles that are said, I mean, and it's because we're, it's important to him, it's important to us that we do it right. Um, and there is a lot of work when it comes to serving lien holders, serving, you know, uh, all parties involved and, and there are, there are a lot of work. And it is, it is a, a lot of time. I don't know if you can put a, you know, but it, the hours add up for sure. We wouldn't be doing it if we didn't feel it was important to public safety.
I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
Um, you, you send the vehicles to the, uh, local auto auction, from what I understand. Um, have we got an agreement with them, uh, like we have with a lot of the other companies in town? Or we get a discounted rate on their sales?
I think we still pay the, the ox, the car fee, correct? Each time we run it through?
Our auction fee is slightly below.
Okay. It's, uh, I'm sorry, our auction fee is slightly below the, the normal rate.
Great, I just...
That they have when they run a car through.
Okay. And then, uh, one last thing, uh, um, just a little, little chuckle here. Everything in the vehicle is paid for with drug money, other than the teddy bears. And I would suggest that anybody who feels like doing that, do it because it's a great feeling to know that some kid is going to have some benefit in a bad situation.
Mayor, if I could just, I'll make this point real quick because I, I did touch on it in my opening comments. Do they work? Do forfeitures work? Are they a deterrent? Um, we looked at that. When I say we, it was our staff and Scott County Attorney's staff. We look back on, on DUI forfeitures that we've had. And we didn't want to cherry pick and just go the last two, three years. We went back eight years and counted five years from there. So, we're trying to give people the absolute greatest amount of time that they can to reoffend. For vehicles, and, and we didn't just do Shakopee. We did every single jurisdiction in Scott County plus the State Patrol. In that five-year period, starting eight years ago, um, the, if we successfully forfeited your vehicle due to an alcohol offense, the recidivism rate was just over sixteen percent, I believe is, yeah, sixteen percent. Compare that to interlock. That's pretty good. And that's really one of the first studies that, any type of study that's been done, uh, in the last few years, uh, out there. This is something that the state's D-WI task force has cited. Um, I've talked about it at the legislature as well. So, there is, there is a, a, a positive impact on seizing these vehicles. And, and I, I hear this a lot from advocates that, that believe, believe the opposite. Well, they're just going to take three hundred dollars and go buy another clunker and go down there. Yeah, I understand that. And, and it's not going to have insurance. But, boy, how, how, I just don't want anybody to be hit by somebody, uh, you know, in a vehicle that we could have taken off the road.
Couple down here and then I'll come back. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, uh, thank you for this presentation and the information and the diligence you put in. The, the question I have is, uh, I know that the state has certain guidelines of what you can spend the money on from forfeiture, forfeitures. Does that count towards someone's salary for doing all that work?
No, we can't use that for any enforcement. We used to be, we used to be able to, years ago, um, say we wanted to do a DWI saturation night and we couldn't, used to be able to pay for that overtime through DUI funds, for example. You cannot do that, uh, anymore. Um, yeah, I don't, yeah, there's nothing we can do for, from a time standpoint.
I'd like to thank, uh, the county attorney's office for being here. Uh, county attorneys here, if, uh, did you have anything to add? Or how, how did your staff member do?
Also.
Surprise.
Trying to wrap this up by eleven. Attorney, thank you very much. Welcome.
I guess I just want to clarify one thing, um, that Councilman Lehman brought up with the, with the precious stones and, and things such as that. One thing I want to make clear is that what's forfeited has to be the proceeds or the instrument of the underlying offense. So, unless someone's diamond ring was stolen and was a part of the underlying offense, we're not going to forfeit it. And even if it was, we, we would find that owner and give them the diamond ring back. So, I'm thinking if it's a bag of diamonds stolen from somewhere, sure, that's going to be forfeited. But if just because they're wearing a diamond necklace or a diamond ring or something, that's not going to be forfeited because that's not proceeds or instrument of the underlying offense.
Bunch of gold coins that they're robbed from a pawn shop or something?
Sure, we would take those. And the, the first point would be try to find the owner and they would be returned. And another kind of situation also is if someone's picked up with drugs in their vehicle, listen, they got five hundred, five hundred dollars in their pocket. That would be a forfeited. But if they come in and say, hey, listen, I just got paid, that's not, I, I wasn't selling drugs. That's personal use. I just got paid five hundred dollars for my, for my company I work for. Here's the pay stub. I just cashed that at the bank. Here's the receipt. They're probably going to, that's not going to be forfeited because that wouldn't be proceeds. So, if things are looked at, they get that determination. We would make that evaluation and we wouldn't forfeit that. So, just wanted to make that clear.
Counselor Mokel, did you have a question?
No, I just really appreciate everybody's, um, presenting tonight and like giving us this information so that we don't have misinformation going out there.
I can tell you with, uh, your department here in Shakopee does an outstanding job. Uh, the things that they implement with, with these funds, with the scholarship program, I mean, that's, that's cutting-edge stuff. Uh, that's, he's getting national recognition because of this. And, and, uh, he would not be able to do that without these forfeiture funds. So, you've got an excellent department here doing great things.
Thanks for the comments. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I, I think the, the point that's overlooked a lot is that you're not getting anything forfeited, your, your first DWI or even your second DWI. Um, it has to be like a third with like extenuating circumstances where you've got young children in the car or you're extremely over limit or you've got this B-card thing or whatever. Uh, so, it's, it's not like it's a, I, uh, a lot of misconception is that you get a DWI, they're taking your car. That's just not the case unless you, that DWI came with, you know, outrunning the cops at a hundred miles an hour and endangering society and all this other stuff that goes along with that to make it something more than just that.
That's correct. Even with that, there is due process.
Right.
I think also that, you know, whether it's drugs, DWI, or designated offenses after conviction. After conviction, obviously.
Right, there's, there's always the due process.
All right. Counselor Lewis?
And, you know, I've always heard different things on this, but what is the estimated times that a person is actually driving drunk before they're caught enough times to take the vehicle away?
I'm not sure we can answer that.
I'm sure somebody has studied that.
Jeff might be able to.
There, there are studies out there, um, and it's high. I've, I've, I've read it was somewhere in the, in the range that, uh, the first person, time you get caught, odds are, you know, that person's, uh, driven drunk about seventy times. Um, you know, I, I've seen studies that say on a Friday night between ten PM and two AM, one in every ten cars on the road is over an oh-eight. Um, so, there's, there's different numbers, uh, out there that you'll he, uh, you'll hear. But if you remember back to the annual report, uh, that I gave, the average, the average blood alcohol level of a, of a DUI arrest by a Shakopee police officer was over twice the legal limit, it was like a point one-six-seven. So, that's the average. We're not, we're not arresting people at oh-eights. That's what's scary is, uh, is people are, people are averaging over the legal limit.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, you, you mentioned that the, uh, forfeiture is, shows better outcomes, less recidivism than the interlock. What is the reci- recidivism on a interlock?
Mayor, members of council, I think that interl- there's a couple interlock studies that have been out there. I think the latest one, uh, numbers that I saw were about eighteen, nineteen percent, but they only counted the people that had stayed on interlock the entire time. They didn't, they didn't, uh, count the people that dropped off and, and how long are, are you giving them? And that was within the last year or two. So, uh, there's a lot of holes in that study. I think interlock needs to be studied a lot further. It can be a very, very useful tool. I'm not here to knock interlock is, uh, cost is, is the biggest problem people have with, with staying on interlock. And, um, interlock and forfeitures are always going to be kind of muddied, you know? If, if someone goes on interlock, you should be able to forfeit the car. But, uh, I think a lot more work needs to be done on, on interlock and its true effectiveness, especially long-term.
Mayor, the, the problem isn't the interlock system. I work on many cars that have them systems and I have to blow in it to actually work on it, um, which, by the way, takes a special talent. Uh, the, the, the issue with interlock is the person that is restricted by that device not using that device and getting in a different vehicle that doesn't have that device in violation of their agreement with the courts and then driving without it under the influence again. That's probably the biggest, uh, flaw in the interlock system, in my opinion. And I'm not a professional on a topic, but that's...
Um, great presentation, great facts, great collaboration between, uh, Scott County, uh, District Attorney's Office and our police department. Thank you all very, very much. Um, let's move forward then. We have ten A, uh, ten A city bill list in front of us for our review.
Ten A one.
Mr. Mayor, we have the addition of ten A one.
Oh, ten A one budget, uh, issue and Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, Darren's going to address that, sir.
Uh, Darren, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As you may recall, a couple of weeks ago, we passed our preliminary budget. Um, that was a one-page document at the end of that, end of the presentation that had, um, if you recall, there were four columns on that page. It had the twenty sixteen actuals, twenty seventeen actuals, um, the twenty eighteen budget, um, that was adopted last year, um, at the end of the year. And then it had the proposed twenty nineteen budget on that, um, document as well. Um, in the twenty seventeen actual column, uh, when we rolled, from our financial system, we rolled our information forward into our, uh, budget software, which is a, a separate, um, rollover into a, a different software project or product. Um, the seventeen actual column was, there was a couple misclassifications due to some unique reporting class, uh, reporting things from twenty seventeen. Um, in twenty seventeen, we had, uh, reclassified our franchise fees, um, for the cable franchise fees. Um, we reclassified those from, they used to be in, um, the license and permits line item and we reclassified those up into the taxes, uh, line item. And that's due to some GASB reporting requirements that, um, we realized in, in the twenty seventeen. And obviously, the franchise fees for the cable have been around for a while. Um, but I think it kind of came to fruition when, last year was the first year that we reported the, um, the electric franchise fees in, in a different fund. Um, and so, that's when it kind of lightbulb clicked that, hey, I think we need to report these as taxes, um, according to GASB, and so, we did that. And so, when we rolled that information forward into our budget module, we just hadn't updated that, that reclassification piece of that. Um, and then the other change was, we had a, with the community center, we had a capital lease for some, um, fitness equipment. And so, from an accounting standpoint, we need to recognize that as, basically, it's recognized as bond proceeds or other financing sources, um, in our financial report. Um, and again, that's a, a unique thing. We don't do that on a regular basis. That was a one-time thing. And so, when we rolled that forward into our budget module, we didn't, uh, we kind of had accounted that for, that in two separate areas. So, we had made those changes. Uh, when we bring back the final budget in, at the end of December, um, those changes have already been updated in the, the twenty seventeen budget will match the twenty seventeen audited financial reports. And just know that the, the financial reporting system, which is audited by our auditors, is truly the financial reports of the city. Um, the budget reporting, we have a little bit more liberty in how we want to report from a budget standpoint than we do from a financial reporting standpoint. So, uh, you know, there are just kind of reclassifications that hadn't been rolled forward quite yet. We spend a lot of time looking at, you know, from a finance standpoint, we spent a lot of time in the, in the prior year. So, we've spent half the year looking at twenty seventeen, got all that squared away. And then we jump forward right into twenty nineteen. So, we, uh, we're busy working on the twenty nineteen budget. Hadn't quite, uh, rolled forward some of that stuff into the, the budget module yet and got that squared away. But it is adjusted and they both reconcile and, um, we'll be, have no issues going forward.
Thanks for the update. Counselor Whiting?
So, no loss to the city and no pot of gold?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, the, uh...
Counselor Lehman?
The capital lease for, uh, exercise equipment at the community center, um, is that a five-year lease?
So, we actually had two leases, um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman. We had two leases. We had an operating lease. And that was for like the treadmills and like the exercise bikes because those kind of wear out a lot, lot quicker. So, we'll replace those on a, on an operational base. So, that's more of a rent type of lease.
Yep.
The capital lease is for like the weights, like the dumbbells and the free weights and those types of things that, that they don't wear out, you know? You can lift them as many times as you want. They look the same now as they will thirty years from now, so...
You lift them more, they get lighter, I heard.
How long are we, how long are we leasing them for, do you know?
I, I think it is a five-year lease. It's somewhere right around that, that ballpark.
Okay.
Um, and I think we did that just to kind of make it operationally, um, make it fit into the operational budget at that point.
And then after that lease, we'll update them if needed?
Oh, if, yeah, on an if-needed basis, yeah.
And, and if we do update them, we'll continue to finance that lease in the same manner that we are today, probably.
Uh, yeah, it's hard to say what it would be like, but it would be, I mean, I don't foresee, I mean, we would probably add to it, uh, rather than replace what we have at, at this point, I would assume.
But we'll still have to pay for whatever new products that we put in. And if we, if we do a capital lease on new product, we're going to have, figure out some way to make the payments on that capital lease like we are now.
Yeah, and so, that capital lease, I think it was like, like seventy-nine thousand dollars, something like that, so...
Okay. We all good on that update? That was a great update. Uh, ten A city bill list, ten B liaison and administration reports. Uh, Counselor Lehman?
Tennessee School Board Regular Business Meeting. What was the date of that? Last Monday, Mon- last Monday night? Uh, big item was they went over their budget. You, everybody probably read it in the newspaper. So, not a whole lot for me to comment on other than pretty standard stuff. It's in the paper. Um, it's the only thing I have from a liaison standpoint. I know the one sixty-nine corridor was putting together possibly a look at the, some of the ports and stuff. Don't know if I'm going to go to that or not. That's it? That's it.
All right. Um, a pretty lean couple of weeks here. The, uh, had a board and commission interview with Counselor Mokel for, uh, a board that we appointed someone tonight. Also, I did meet with, uh, Mayor of Prior Lake and looking for the thank you card for the fiscal disparities. But, uh, he really wanted to know how we lowered our tax rate and provided a tax cut. He, uh, they were, they were just, uh, he was just amazed at that, so. I gave him a brief on that and, uh, that's my lead. I gave him a brief on that, and that's my liaison report. Councilor Whiting?
Well, thank you. On the twenty-ninth, Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, you met. Couple of the items on the agenda was the CAD AVL system they're working through. If you remember, probably about a year ago, they had purchased this, and this is the system that interacts within the bus, it counts the people, it keeps the, you know, reports the on-time, it has a lot of different avenues to report back and tell the system how it's working. So that's in a preliminary stage of testing right now. Another acronym for government, since we don't have enough, it's called TAMP, T-A-M-P, that's the Transit Asset Management Plan. To, you need to look at all your assets in the transit authority so that they can report back to the Met Council, who reports back at a federal level, to be able to be active for grants and things like that. So they initiated the TAMP program. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Mokel?
I also had the commission interview, and that's it.
All right. Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor. The one thing I would say is that, yes, it was an actual tax cut this year, and the last two years prior to that, it was a tax rate cut. I was reading the headline in the local newspaper over the weekend, and they called it a tax rate cut again, and it's actually even more than a tax rate cut. We've done that for the last three years. This year, it's an actual tax cut.
Thanks for clarification. Councilor Luce?
Yeah, I did go to a meeting, I know I'm not supposed to give a report, but this is really a good meeting that I think everyone, if you get a chance, you should go to. The opioid meeting that we had in Prior Lake, it has a lot to do with the drug court and how the treatment goes on. And the one speaker there worked directly with the people that were addicts, and the information she gave was very good, and it really made it understandable. I mean, of why they do this and, you know, all the reasoning behind it and the physical effects they go through, so. That, it was great, so. We had a lot of good speakers.
Councilman Lehman, item number eleven, other business?
Thank you, Mayor. The one topic I was going to ask about was the Shakopee Avenue Road Recon Project west of Marshall Road.
Steve?
That project seems to be dragging on and on and on.
Mayor and council members, we had a, I call it a pre-paving meeting, must have been about a week and a half ago, where we were ready to pave the wear course on it, and then it started raining. And I haven't been up there yet this week, actually, but they were able to pave a little bit of the wear course, I think it was last week, and then it started raining, so we had to shut them down. So we're waiting for a good, a warmer, rain-free gap in the weather to pave that roadway, and that's it. The contractor's pretty much done with the punchless items, so once they pave that project, it'll be done.
Do we have an end date on that contract, or is it open?
I don't know the actual completion date, but the project is substantially complete with the exception of the wear course. So we, you know, we're going to focus on getting that project completed before it snows, and that's our main goal here.
Okay. That's all I had, Mayor.
Hey, thanks for that. If there's no other business before us, it is before eleven o'clock, we talk about efficiency and effectiveness. Entertain a motion, Councilor Mokel.
Make a motion to adjourn to October sixteen, twenty seventeen, or twenty eighteen at seven PM.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Luce. Discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned at eight thirty-three. All right, I was wrong. Shocking.